Deb, you give me a lot of extra work here.
Everyone can take their seats. We'll call to order the regular meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2019. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Alderman Brunelli.
President.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
President.
Alderwoman Cotto. Alderman DiGio Ben Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Kula. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujam. Alderman Salvio.
President.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Reaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Pernarowski.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. We have a forum, and we'd just like to welcome our newest member here with us tonight, Alderman Zimmerman. Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to...
(applause).
That's the last time you'll get everyone to like you, so enjoy it. With that, we'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. When you begin speaking, there's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 327 Bucks Hill Road, Vincent Scott Amiglia. Vincent Scott Amiglia from 327 Bucks Hill Road, just here to remind you about when you borrow 2.5 million from the pension fund when we switch from Cigna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, over to Cigna. You borrowed the money, you haven't returned it. The towns that owe the city of Waterbury money for water and stuff, I guess. I've never seen anything pay for it in paper that is settled. If they're not paying the water bill, you shut the city residents off. Why don't you shut them off? The city needs money. You're ready to raise taxes again, the way I heard it through the grapevine. But for three days after it snows, there's roof on top, there's snow on top of cars, trucks, buses, SUVs. You can make a ton of money if you doesn't force your ordinances about the tinted windows. They should have a DMV sticker. Why don't you do surprise checks for registrations, licenses, insurance, because there's so many out-of-state plates, it's unreal. The parking on the sidewalks, the wrong side of the streets. You want to put a greenway and a new park in, you can't take care of the parks, you can't take care of the Board of Education properties, the school properties, to maintain the grass or anything. I don't know if the city can make an ordinance about somebody leaves the keys in the car, somebody takes the car, make the owner responsible for all the damages the vehicle does, and throw the owner of the car in jail for negligence. At 189 Bucks Hill Road, the electrical pole of the house came down off the house, off the meter box. They put it back up with ropes, called the fire department. Nobody red tags it, but it's a hazard. Nobody does anything. Out-of-state plates at the school. You told me last year, company going around checking parts about these plates. Well, there's nine of them now up at Willby North End Complex. The plates are from New Jersey, North Carolina, South Carolina, Arizona, Massachusetts, New York, and Pennsylvania. I don't think people are driving from Arizona and back to Connecticut each day to go to work. We need a three-way stop at St. Michael's in Bucks Hill to slow down traffic and protect the kids who are crossing and going to school, even though there's a crossing guard. She has problems with the vehicles. That's about it, except the door handles in this building are still nasty. They haven't been cleaned. The chandeliers are filthy. It's on to the mayor's knows. I think some people should do a better job. Have a nice day. Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence DiPillo.
Good evening. Lawrence DiPillo, 11 Steuben Street in Waterbury. First, I'd like to wish all of the Aldermen a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year, and to our newest Alderman, Alderwoman Zimmerman, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to take up one item on the Board of Alderman Agenda. It's item number 12. It's requesting approval of a purchase and sale agreement to sell a vacant lot at 441 Baldwin Street to Michael F. Batista. I'd like to draw your attention since as part of that packet, you have a schedule. And on Schedule 10-18, item number 1.7, it says the buyer agrees that it will comply with sections of the city code of ordinance requirements that said person has delivered to the city an affidavit on a city authorized form stating that the person's affiliates have no delinquent taxes or other financial obligations owed to the city, a copy of which is attached here, too. I did not see any documents supplied by the Director of Finance or his department that states that there are no taxes, water, or sewer leens, or parking tickets owned by the proposed purchaser of this property. And as such, I also did a little research, and it seems that the city records for taxes owed is inaccurate on the website, that it is actually showing thousands of dollars owed by Mr. Batista, but my understanding is they may not be owed at all. So before this Board approves the purchase or sale of any of its property, it should have a full disclosure whether or not the purchaser has the taxes, sewer, water, parking tickets, any monies owed to the city of Waterbury current, and any inaccuracy in the city records should be corrected prior to any transfer of city property. So I hope that's taken up this evening, and if that information is not forthcoming this evening, then I hope this item would be put on hold until this Board receives proper documentation. And with that, thank you very much, and everyone enjoy the New Year.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. First of all, I'd like to congratulate those that are new to the Board. Also, I'd like to congratulate Alderman Sherman on the minority ship. I look forward to working with you. I think we're going to be able to do great things, working with you and both sides of the aisle, working together. I think you have a very good collaborative effort on that, and I think we're going to continue to do great work. And I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and Merry Christmas, first of all. Item number seven on your agenda, Library Park, Phase One. I would ask that you approve this. This is just another great example of what a private partnership and city partnership teaming up with Webster Bank, a true business that had a true commitment to the city of Waterbury. I would ask that you approve this. You know, there were a lot of naysayers saying that we spent way too much money on the green, and I would have to say that that green, obviously, last week with our tree lighting, I thought for a minute that we were in Rockefeller Center. The green was totally packed. The Pal Choir did a magnificent job, and you know, I think it's just a great thing happening in downtown, and I want to give Post also a kudos. I went with my niece down there to see Santa and the old storefront, and I thought they did a marvelous job. And I know that the mayor's office working with Post, it brought back some great memories of mine growing up, well, when my mother took me there right before Howin, he was at close, so I want to commend everybody on that. Item eight, I would ask that you pass this contract with the teachers. You know, I think that it's a win for the city. It's a win for the teachers. I would like to congratulate the city. I thought they worked courageously the last time trying to come with some sort of an agreement. Unfortunately, it had to go to arbitration. The city did win that arbitration award, and I think that arbitration award helped the city, not to mention, as the mayor has said countless times, the blue cowherd, the white cowherd, the nurses, the nursing supervisors, the police and fire for taking a zero in the first years of their contract helped, not only in their bargaining units, but helped the teachers get the raises that they deserved here. And you know, we're in a season of being jolly and giving, and you know, that's all fine, and we put the past behind us. But I think also, the reason why a lot of these bargaining units decided to take a zero in the first year is because this mayor, since he took office, has been a man of his word. When he says he's going to do something, he's going to do it. When he asks for something, sometimes it's hard for us to bear, but we've saw over countless contracts that have come here, he's been a man of his word, and he's done what's right, not only for the bargaining units, but he's done what's right for the citizens of the city, the handicapped citizens of the city, the elderly in the city, and countless other people that live in this city.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
And lastly, there was a lot said about the insurance. The insurance never changed, not once, and it stayed the same, just like he said it was going to stay. So we let the past go beyond us, but I would hope that in the future, when we're negotiating the truth be told, and we don't get into this name-calling, I think the mayor's done a great job in keeping his head high. I don't know if I could with the name-calling that went on for the last year and a half. But I hope we, in this new year, could work together. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. Before I start to say anything, I want to say Merry Christmas, everybody, and a Happy Blessed New Year, and congratulations to all those people who won the election, and even those who ran. I know I was in a position myself where I ran a couple of times, and unfortunately, I didn't make it. And anyways, it is what it is. But I did want to say one thing, that I want to thank a lot of people in this room, and they know who they are, who came to the Waterville Community Club, and some of the Aldermen in my district, and they came, and I was happy that later they came. We gave out 17 presents for the kids in the neighborhood, and some of these kids, they have parents who are veterans themselves, and they had basically nothing for the children, so we had food and fun, and we had a lot of good times in Waterville Community Club, which is the old Waterville Firehouse. So the mayor's right when he says that a lot of people do a lot of good things in Waterbury, and I appreciate that. Okay, on to what I had to talk about. Today's modern tires consist of many various materials, such as synthetic, natural rubber compound fabric, wire, steel, carbon, and other chemical products, which make up the entire body of a good quality tire. Now, looking at our roads, one of my pet peeves, the true reason why asphalt is favored over concrete, it's less costly, but comes with several issues. Asphalt tends to crack in cold climates and may even deteriorate faster due to its softer consistency of made-up materials. However, asphalt is fairly easy to repair, especially when it comes to potholes, cracks, or ruts in the roads. Asphalt payment composed of 5% cement and 95% crust stone, sand, and gravel. Note, all that must be mixed, heated, melted down at the various asphalt plants throughout the country before it can be used. To make this product, asphalt is generally much cheaper to install than concrete per square foot. Also, tar may be produced from coal, wood, petroleum products, and peat can also be used for paving roads. Most asphalt produced today will be used for highways and local roads, a simple process of steaming truckloads of hot asphalt in land and roadbed rake level, and this may be compacted down by the surface by very heavy steam rollers, as you people would know. A material called patch may also be used in a pinch, cold patch, but never use second-grade asphalt because it's not worth the trouble. It's a waste of time and effort, and too costly for the taxpayers. A rut is a depression of brood worn into the road from very heavy trucks, and every vehicle whom used highways and byways every day estimated by tens of millions. Cold climates also plays a major factor in deformation of the roads. Why can't we have some important alternatives, like using old discarded tires called rubber-modified asphalt binders? I mentioned this before. You guys go on the website, and there's right now in Europe, in Germany, in Japan, and in England, they have been using this for about 10 years now. So this is brand-new technology, and you know, we should be involved in this and using this.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Okay. It increases payment life in all kinds of climates according to the EPA/DEEP. Millions of tires are discarded every day in huge city dumps, an environmental nightmare. Recycled tires can be used with this brand-new technology, and I just want to say, I think this is something we should look at, and I'm glad the mayor is here tonight. I mean, you know, this is the United States of America. We have a lot of good engineers out there, a lot of good scientists, a lot of good chemical scientists, if you will. And I'm just bringing it up to the Board of Alderman, because if we could turn it around and do this and utilize this, then we're going to save an awful lot of money. And I know a lot of people come in and complaining about potholes and ruts and cracks. I just want to say, we went to Reach Across America up in Banham this past weekend, and I was honored to be there for all the veterans. But when I was driving up to Norfield Road, you know what that is, going right up to Litchfield, there's potholes, there's cracks, there's ruts. It's not just in Waterbury, it's all over the state of Connecticut. So I'm not in favor of tolls, but I am in favor of getting things rectified throughout the state of Connecticut. Thank
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. I neglected to note earlier, before we go to the next item, that Alderwoman Cotto is not here this evening, is apparently traveling, and Alderman Matthews had called in earlier, and he is under the weather tonight, which is why he is not here. With that, we have on our agenda this evening item number eight, which is the successor collective bargaining agreement between the Waterbury Teachers Association and the Waterbury Board of Education for approval. Unless there's objection, we'll reassign that to the Committee of the Whole and take that up as our first item this evening. Hearing no objection, I entertain a motion to go into committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're now sitting as a committee of the whole, and with that, we'll take up new business item number eight, which is the requested approval of a proposed successor collective bargaining agreement between the Waterbury Teachers Association and the Waterbury Board of Education. Attorney Shaw.
Good evening. In your packets, you should all have a memorandum dated December 3rd. This is a summary of the proposed contract changes for the upcoming teacher's contract. The first change is with respect to the duration. With the arbitration award from last year, this was intended to be a three-year contract, and through these negotiations, the parties in fact agreed to a four-year agreement. The next change has to do with the wages during these negotiations. The parties agreed to revise the existing salary schedule to make it more cost-effective. Under the prior salary schedule, the projected cost of step advancement was between 3.5% and 3.9%. That amounted to about $3.8 million to about $4.5 million was the cost of those step advancements. And that depends on the year and the salary, excuse me, and the teaching census in any given year. Under the revised salary schedule, the cost of step advancement is projected to be between 2.7% and 2.48%, depending on the year and the teaching census of any given year. That amounts to about $2.7 to $2.8 million, so significantly less costly in terms of step advancement. Based on the revised salary schedule and scale construction, it becomes more cost-effective, in fact, over the course of an agreement, when there is step advancement given for those step advancements to be awarded or negotiated. And in negotiating this revised salary schedule, the district focused in large part on raising the entry-level salaries, which would promote recruitment and retention efforts. That was an important factor for the superintendent and the mayor, and ultimately, the union agreed to those changes. Waterbury's entry-level salaries have historically lagged behind its urban competitors, as well as surrounding communities. In terms of the actual wages that were agreed upon, in the first year, as you know, there was a wage freeze as part of the arbitration award from last January. In the second year, there's a step advancement for all teachers. The projected percentage increase for that step advancement in the second year is 2.73% with a cost of about $2.8 million. In the third year of the contract, which is 2021-22, there's a step advancement for all teachers with a projected percentage increase of that step advancement in year three of 2.5%, and the projected cost to be around $2.7 million. In the fourth year of the agreement, there's also a step advancement for all teachers with the projected percentage increase of step advancement in that year of 2.48%, and projected dollar value of that, about $2.8 million. Step advancement in any given year beyond the term of this contract are not guaranteed and will have to be negotiated between the parties. The total percentage of the wage package is projected over four years to be 7.76%. When you include in the cost to migrate to this new salary, the total projected percentage increase of the wages over the four-year contract is about 8.93%. And important in that was the arbitration award last year with the wage freeze, which has been discussed here tonight. It was really important for the district to be able to increase those entry-level salaries. And just by way of comparison, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education releases data about comparable settlements, and the comparable settlements for three-year agreements so far this negotiation season amounts to 8.99%. So we come in under that for a four-year agreement. The other changes to this contract include a few insurance changes. There's no change in the first year, no changes to the plan design or the premiums, or the funding level of the HSA in the second year as well. However, the union agreed to accept the Advanced Utilization Management Plan, which is a prescription management program in effect on July 1, 2020, and that program's designed to eliminate waste and ensure that covered persons on city health plans are being prescribed appropriate medications for their diagnosed conditions. There's also an opioid abuse component for that program. In the third year, again, there are no changes to the premium cost share, the plan design, or the city's deductible funding. And in the fourth year, the city reduces its funding of the employee HSA from 50% to 45%, with a projected cost avoidance of that 5% of about $188,000 a year. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions on the contract? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bear with me one moment, please. I'm sorry. The HSA match, do we have a schedule? Is that going to continue to drop that we're going from 50 to 45 in year four? Is that something that we're looking at, continuing to drop? Maybe that's...
It's something that I think the city intends to negotiate in future contracts. It doesn't automatically drop based on the language of this contract, but it's certainly something we're seeing in the public sector marketplace with a decrease in matched funding over time.
Okay, thank you. I think it's great to see the starting salaries for our entry-level teachers being increased. It's clear we struggle to get people to come into the city to work and teach our students and our children, and to keep them here. So hopefully, this will help keep some quality teachers here. Thank you.
Any further questions? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Shaw, I have a quick question. So as I read the document, I also noticed the opioid abuse component. And I don't know if you'll be able to answer my question, but could you elaborate a bit on what that actually is?
I think I would probably defer to Mike LeBlanc, who has been intimately involved in the rollout of that program, but I believe that he can speak better to that.
The city's Pharmacy Benefit Manager is the one that administers these programs, the AUM programs. And on the opiate side, one of the components of that management program is their systems will monitor prescriptions that are being filled for an individual. So to the extent you might have a situation where a covered individual is obtaining opiates from multiple doctors that have prescribed those prescriptions, there's a process where the system will identify that situation, and there'll be a reach-out through our PBM to the doctors to confirm essentially whether or not they're aware of the fact that there's other opiates being prescribed to that individual. So it's a monitoring program, again, that in this case is designed to manage the opiate distribution through our pharmaceuticals. Additionally, the PBM will comply with all of the state's mandates that have been implemented recently as it relates to particularly the quantity distribution of opiates when they're prescribed. There's limits for minors and for adults that have been established here in the state of Connecticut to help combat the issues associated with this program, with the opiate program.
So is it specifically to, I guess, to identify duplicate orders of opioid prescriptions, or is there also any access to services?
No, this management program that's in place is just specifically tied to what's happening through the system, through the pharmacy authorization program.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually for Mike LeBlanc. Curious if you happen to have a rough number for the city savings for moving the bulk of the employees in the city over to HSA? I know this is what the second contract for the teachers under the HSA.
Yes. I can't speak to a specific number on the savings, but what I would highlight, and we recently had a discussion as we start preparing for our renewal for July 1 of next year, and we were looking at how the city's costs in its health program have been trending for the past two to three years. And two years ago, we had a trend increase in the approximate range of 4%, and then last year, it was approximately 2%. And then last year, it was approximately 2% increase over the year prior. And what that is reflective of is we are trending substantially better than what is happening in the market as far as year-over-year increases. And I think that is absolutely attributable to the engagement and different benefits that come with the high deductible health plan and really driving some engagement and investment of the members in their healthcare in trying to manage their own costs associated with it.
Thank you, Mike.
Further questions? Hearing none, I just want to take a moment to say that I like, I think this is a great contract. I'd like to commend both the WTA, the mayor, the administration, the negotiating team for coming up with this contract. I think it's very good for the city. I think it addresses the needs we have to track new teachers, to retain the teachers, and that it's very good for the taxpayers in the city as well. So congratulations for making that happen. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved, contract item number eight.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. Contract is approved. Thank you all very much. So with that, I would entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business. Alderman Brunelli.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We're back in the regular order of business. We'll do the final vote on this as part of a consent calendar instead of going through that now. Just the next item would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, November 18, 2019. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion approved, the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, November 18, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve them as presented, a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. I would just note that you have in front of you with respect to item number six, it's just some clarifying information of the companies under that paving contract and the proposed street list that would be part of it. Although I would note that the paving is scheduled to happen in April, so this list is subject to modification depending on how things go over the winter. And with respect to item number 21, which are the towing contracts, there is a document that you have affirming that we can move forward with these vendors in compliance with the charter. They don't need to be added. They're just there for your information. With that, we will recess into committees, and we will begin with the Intergovernmental Committee and then go to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
I call the Intergovernmental Committee to order. First item on the agenda is item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreement for CDYR45 submitted the City of Waterbury and Manufacturing Alliance Service Corp. as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, City of Waterbury. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to approve, motion approval of item number four as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve appointment of the following individuals to Boards to Wit as submitted by Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor, City of Waterbury. First one is Sajuda Wykoff for the Greater Waterbury Cable Council, term December 16, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Ruven Weinreth, Finance and Audit Review Commission, term December 16, 2019 through December 31, 2023. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to motion now to disapprove the appointments of the individuals as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a proposed successor collective bargaining agreement contract. Actually, we did this as a whole. Never mind. I apologize. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number 15. Your Intergovernmental Agreement respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter for Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot Project as submitted by Dan Pisch, Interim Director, Waterbury Development Corporation. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 15 as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a State of Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract at No Cost for the Support for Pregnant and Parenting Teens, Women's Fathers and Their Families SPPT Program as submitted by Keri A. Swang Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 16 as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a Connecticut Community Colleges Facility Reservation Agreement with Nogatuck Valley Community College at No Charge for Use of Founder's Hall Community Room as submitted by Keri A. Swang Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 17 as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement with the Institute of Professional Practice, Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $330,665 to provide educational services to students with disabilities in accordance with their Individual Education Program, IEP, as submitted by Keri A. Swang Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 18 as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item on the agenda is item number 21. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement for towing services between the city and various companies listed on Schedule A of said contract as submitted by Kevin Daly, Office of the Corporation Council, on behalf of Captain Steve Gilmore, Waterbury Police Department. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 21 as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following refunds. Brass Mill Center Mall LLC for $522.58.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract for 2019-2020 milling and paving between the City of Waterbury and B&amp;W Paving and Landscaping LLC in the amount of $2,295,000.
So moved.
At, no, excuse me, there's something in the way. As submitted by Paul M. Belagamo, City Engineer, Bureau of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question on the contractors.
Hold there, woman, sir and man. Go ahead.
Excuse me. I had a question on the performance bond and the payment bond that was attached or should have been attached.
Yes, I'm Paul Belagamo, City Engineer.
Excuse me?
What's the question?
I don't see the bond attached, the performance bond attached. Is this bonded for a certain amount?
It's bonded, it will be bonded for 100% of the contract amount.
Okay.
We're awaiting the bonds and insurance from the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you can answer this question. My question is concerning the Good Jobs Ordinance and who provides oversight to make sure that jobs like this are in compliance with our Good Jobs Ordinance?
The Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board provides the oversight.
Okay.
With the city, yeah.
Is there someplace that we can see reports that show certain construction jobs are meeting or not meeting those requirements? Is there a punishment if a company doesn't meet our ordinance? Or is it scolding?
I'm not sure. I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay.
We do, when we do our contracts, we submit our monthly, the contractors' monthly payment applications to the Northwest Regional Investment Board, and they review them and sign off on them.
Okay.
We used to get reviews on this, and we can ask for them to come on a more regular basis if you want to see them. But we were having, as you recall, problems at one point that it wasn't being enforced, and we brought in the Northwest Workforce to oversee it. And they've done a very good job of making sure that there's compliance. And the punishment is, I think, they really harangue companies until they make sure that they are in compliance, but they stay on top of it for that. So we can get...
It's a little off-topic. I know for city jobs, we have the Good Jobs Ordinance. For state jobs like the 84 Project and 8 and 84, there's... Is there a state ordinance that says that?
It says.
That they have to hire a certain portion from the municipality they're doing the work in? And I apologize for that.
That's right. State contracts don't provide for that. They do provide for disadvantaged minority-owned business requirements, but they don't let you pick one municipality over the other.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number seven, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an architect and engineer agreement, RFP number 6480, for a Library Park renovation project, Phase One, between the City of Waterbury, Connecticut, and Malone &amp; McBroom Incorporated, in the not-to-exceed amount of $130,000 as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, Bureau of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
If I may, if I could take the privilege, I just wanted to highlight, particularly for those of you on the board who may not be aware of this, but Webster Bank, in planning for this project, made a million-dollar commitment towards the Library Park Improvements Project. What you just approved is the Phase One component. And I just wanted to confirm, it was actually just last week, we received the second of four $250,000 installment payments from Webster Bank. And that will be the source of funding that we'll be providing for this contract.
Thank you. Item number nine, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for utility reduction audit services with Tryon Clearview Group as submitted by Sheri Koska, Assistant Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you. We went through an audit of a lot of the city buildings two or three years ago, did we not? For the efficiencies of the buildings. We're not doing anything redundant here. These are all for different areas of the city? This type of...
Yeah, completely different. So a few years ago, we did an energy assessment audit on the efficiency of the buildings. This contract, and there's another one, is specifically focused on auditing the monthly invoices that we receive from the utility companies to confirm essentially whether or not we are being billed correctly and if there's any issues. And to the extent that through the audit process, they identify any errors in the billings, upon recovery, we will share the savings with the vendor. But it would be only upon which that time we actually receive the recovery of funds.
So that would be the only payment? If we're recovering funds, they get a portion of that?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mike.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 10, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for in-force loss and consultant services with High Bridge Solutions Incorporated as submitted by Sheri Koska, Assistant Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 11, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for utility reduction audit services with New Energen LLC as submitted by Sheri Koska, Assistant Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 12, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a purchase and sale agreement to sell a vacant lot located at 441 Baldwin Street to Michael F. Batista as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm going to start off discussion. Mike, just to clear the air, Mr. Batista, does he owe any back taxes or any liens, anything that he has to clear up before we move forward?
He does not. I can confirm that he does not. That all the required disclosure forms were submitted by Mr. Batista, and he has received the tax clearance. In that review, there are prior outstanding taxes that are in a suspense status related to this prop, to one of the properties that Mr. Batista is currently the owner of. Those are taxes that predate his acquisition of that property.
that predate his acquisition of that property through the tax hell auction process. Again, those taxes are in a suspense status. However, currently, the suspense taxes are showing up on our online system, but again, those are not obligations of Mr. Batista.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I'm just, so we can?
All the women, Zimmerman?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
So we can, we can sell a piece of property with suspended taxes on the property?
Yes. Essentially, those taxes are uncollectible. They were, our ability to collect essentially was, we, we gave it up when we allowed that property to be sold at tax auction. So back in 2012, essentially, the property sold at tax auction for less than the amount of taxes that were due at the time, and resulting in, again, these taxes then being reclassified into suspenses uncollectible. And then, what happens on the tax system side is, after 15 years, any and all taxes outstanding are essentially written off the books at that point in time.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All the woman, McCarthy? Martinez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, just want to confirm with you that the list that's on the website is, oh, thank you. The list that's on the website showing that Mr. Batista owes is not his. Is that correct?
It's, it's associated with the property, but he's not obligated to those suspense taxes that are showing up on the system.
Okay, so technically, in the city's eyes, we are able to sell that property to him for that amount that he requested. Is that correct?
That is correct. Through this process, there's a requested tax clearance of the tax office, and I can confirm that they have issued the tax clearance for this, for this sale.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it would be easier for us to receive that tax clearance prior, just so that we can just double check.
Certainly, and I do apologize for that, that it wasn't included initially with the packets, and we'll look to, to make sure that it's included in future sale transactions that come before this board.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from Intergovernmental? Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 13, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for bond underwriting services with Piper Jaffray and Company, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? We have a motion and a second. No discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 19, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer within the city's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $25,500, as submitted by Sarah Argieri, Policy and Budget Management Specialist.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Standing, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $13,113.63, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one, received and placed on file. Item number two is received and placed on file. Item number three is on consent to approve refunds to the Brass Mill Center Mall LLC in the amount of $522.58. Item C is on consent, I'm sorry, item four is on consent to approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreement for CDYR-45 between the City of Waterbury and Manufacturing Alliance Services Corp. Item five is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Sujada Wykoff to the Greater Waterbury Cable Council and Ruben Weinreth to the Finance and Audit Review Commission. Item number eight is on consent to approve a construction contract for the 2019-2020 milling and paving between the City of Waterbury and B&amp;W Paving and Landscaping LLC in the amount of $2,259,159. Item seven is on consent to approve an architect and engineer agreement for Library Park Renovation Project Phase One between the city and Malone and McBroom in the amount of not to exceed $130,000. Item number eight is on consent to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the Waterbury Teachers Association and the Waterbury Board of Education. Item number nine is on consent to approve a contract for utility reduction audit services with Tyron and Clearview Group. Item number 10 is on consent to approve a contract for in-force loss and consulting services with Hybrid Solutions Incorporated. Item number 11 is on consent to approve a contract for utility reduction audit services with New Energen LLC. Item number 12 is on consent to approve a purchase and sale agreement to sell a vacant lot located at 441 Baldwin Street to Michael F. Batista. Item 13 is on consent to approve a contract for bond underwriting services with Piper Jaffray and Company. Item 14 is received and placed on file. Item 15 is on consent to approve a project authorization letter for Project Street Surface Parking Lot, Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot Project. Item number 16 is on consent to approve a State of Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract at No Cost for the Support of Pregnant and Parenting Teens, Women's Fathers and Their Families Program. Item number 17 is on consent to approve a Connecticut Community Colleges College Facility Request Reservation Agreement with Nogatuck Valley Community College at No Charge for the Use of Founder's Hall Community Room. Item number 18 is on consent to approve an agreement with the Institute of Professional Practice Incorporated in the not to exceed amount of $330,665 to provide educational services to students with disabilities in accordance with their individual education programs. Item number 19 is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the city's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $25,500. Item number 20 is received and placed on file. Item number 21 is on consent to approve an agreement for towing services between the city and various companies listed on Schedule A of said contract. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved, the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve it as presented, a no vote would be to disapprove the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar was approved unanimously. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman DGO Von Carlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $13,113.63, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Kula and seconded by Alderman Weaver. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. With that, we're at the end of our agenda. I would remind you that our next meeting is January 6th, so as we leave here tonight, I would wish you all a very joyful and peaceful Christmas season and a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Is there anything else to come before this board? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a great holiday, everyone. We'll see you next year.